Father, we thank you for your love and your mercy to us. And thank you for all the great things that you have in the country, the freedoms that we have here that the whole of the country has. Father, I want to ask that you continue to bless our country and bless our leaders and continue to watch over our first responders as they keep us safe. I ask all these things to you. Please.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our protective side, the United States of America, one state under God, one way invisible.
Second line, we're going to give some call for citizens' input and our concerns.
Wait, wait, wait. I do. Good morning. I'm Lynn Claire Jaeger and I'm representing the prenatal clinic. And first of all, we want to thank the court and the citizens of Brazos County for being so supportive of the prenatal clinic and our efforts to make sure that women, no matter what their ability to pay for services, receive prenatal care. Our tagline is "Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies," and we believe that early, timely, and treated care makes such a difference toward that end. So we thank you for that. Last week, you presented a proclamation and we were not here, and I hope you will excuse that. I had my first grandchild last week, and about the time you were doing that, I was meeting him. So I hope you will forgive me for that, for a week's delay in getting here. But next Wednesday, the 25th, we are having a Chamber of Commerce ribbon hanging in celebration of our recognition of Healthy Baby Month. The prenatal clinic has designated October as Healthy Baby Month, and we invite you to please come and join in celebration that women all across Brazos County and the Brazos Valley have access to care.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much. If we could, we get a quick picture? I'm sorry, I know that's interruptive, but you might. I didn't introduce Myra Menosa. She's our office manager, and if she could come up and get her a picture with us. Do you want to stand there?
You understand the process?
(inaudible). Lynn, what time is the ribbon thing?
4:30 to 5:30. Ask if I may contact you that morning.
(inaudible). Yeah, sure. (inaudible).
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge to read this. That's a ribbon.
Would you do that? Tell me the ribbon that you want to make this ribbon.
Yes, Father. Can we again, when is it?
We'll say this one's at 1:30.
I'll let you count.
Okay, let me take this and we have it in place. That would be a five. All right.
That's a good thing.
Okay. Number three is presentation, discussion, presentation, dedication of this rule of court cases. Mark.
Judge Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak with you today concerning historical significance of the first actual account of any courts here in Brazos County. The first district judge in Brazos County, which was a circuit judge that traveled by horseback to county to county. It is said that he had his books in one saddlebag and a Bible in the other. A gentleman by the name of Robert Emmett Bledsoe Baylor, R.E.B. Baylor. He was the third district judge in the state of Texas back then. Of course, everyone knows it's the Republic of Texas. Why is it significant? The first person that came in contact with me about this was Mark Davidson, Harris County District Judge in Houston, and said that there may be some historical significant documents that we have here in Brazos County. Since then, a federal-appointed judge, Jennifer Elrod, came with him and looked at the first edition, the first books, the first court cases here in Brazos County, and come to find out the reason it's significant is not only for here in Brazos County, but it's significant for a university, a prominent university here in Texas, Baylor University. He is the founder of Baylor University, not only Baylor University, but Mary Harden Baylor. And to me, that is even more significant simply because of the universities both included. How this came about, and y'all were a big part of it. We contacted the State Bar of Texas for a grant to be able to preserve, not only preserve the original documents, but also to be able to provide to Brazos County a document that people could come and actually touch and see every day. And then another copy because it's going to be a significant copy given to Baylor University. And that is slated for Friday morning at 7:00. And I will be going to Waco and presenting the Board of Regents their copy, and they're as excited about it as anybody can be. I want to make sure that we give everyone the accolades that they should be getting. If you haven't had an opportunity to come over to the courthouse, now's a good time. Last week wouldn't have been a too good of a time, but this week's a good week. We've got floor installed, we've got paint on the walls, and things really do look very good over there. But I need to make sure that Ernest Dutz, along with, let's see, John Lyon and Isaiah, I believe, were all involved in building a encasement that has, it's sealed, but it's lighted and it is very well done. And so if you get a chance to come over, so that there's no, as we said, there's three copies. The original, of course, will be in the encasement, and no one has access to that. And then we have a copy of both of the books that we're going to, I'm going to leave with you so that you can look through, and I'll come back and get it at another appropriate time. And then the third copy will be given to Baylor Board of Regents on Friday. So if, it just, it's, there's many good things that we have talked about when we've talked about paperless. And we have embarked on that within the last year as far as our court system. And we have to. We know it's something that we don't have a choice of doing. But one of the things that you actually lose, you lose that pen-to-paper contact. And that's one of the things that we've been able to preserve, and I think it is really significant, and I hope that, again, we're going to leave the book here today. I'm open to questions. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. But I think that this is something that Brazos County should be very proud of, and like I say, it didn't cost the taxpayers any money at all.
Thank you, Mark. I have to see you finished, I got the project finished. I mean, that's, I'll leave it with, I'll just, I'll get it another day if we'll take a look at it. Thanks. Thank you for what you do. Number four is consider and take action, or we'll consider take action on agenda items 435. Number four is consider and take action on application of brown auto recycling sales and glass LFC for the operating salvage yard. Second. Second. So a motion made in second. We had a workshop. It looked like the salvage yard has done lots to comply with the TCEQ and all the things. The only thing I'd like to do is make it contingent on.
Yeah, I was just going to, (inaudible).
Make it contingent.
(inaudible).
So with that, with motion that it's, the application will be approved contingent on complying with City of Bryan.
Yes, sir. May I ask, when you say contingent, as we discussed before, Mr. Scholz, our engineer, it's not going to happen overnight due to city compliance. So contingent means you get the permit and therefore are proper in having it, it's just, it would be renewed? I guess that's my question. Because the city codes are not going to be six months, you know, overnight, but we want to be in compliance with the county. And we will renew every year with the county. Have we issued, go ahead and issue the permit? And if they don't comply with the City of Bryan, then would you pull the permit? Will you be checking on them to make sure that they're compliant?
We will.
Their working force, they're compliant? We will. We will be doing inspections. I'm sorry, can I get your name? Jean, I'm a (inaudible). I'm a (inaudible).
So they will, we will approve the permit, but it could be closed if they don't comply. If City of Bryan decides that whatever, it's been too long, whatever, I know y'all are going to try to comply and do everything you can, but we have no doubt about that.
Let me rephrase my motion, and that is to approve it with periodic review to make sure that they are working towards compliance with the City of Bryan regulations.
And I second that. So motion made second, approve it with that. If it is, all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I don't know if you care. Number five, free appointment of Elizabeth Dick to the Workforce Development Board. Term appointment is 1/16/18 to 6/30/20.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number six, request approval to wire transfer $777,659.24 to the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, HHSC, as part of the Texas Healthcare Transformation and Quality Improvement Program, 1115 waiver. This intergovernmental transfer, IG2, will provide funds for several qualifying local hospitals that will be matched by federal funds by the means of necessary.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number seven, is Brazos County Constable Chris Ford, request approval to set donated excess police duty gear, college station, City of Morrison.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number nine, is Payman R. Sedition, apply for N.R. regulation.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number eight, is $100 donation from insurers of Texas funds will be used for employee (inaudible). Move for approval. Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number ten, is Payman R. Sedition, PH media group holding the evil in the amount of $830.34 for advertising evil purchasing a purchase order that's not obtained in exchange.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number eight, is $100 donation from insurers of Texas funds will be used for employee (inaudible). Move for approval. Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number ten, is Payman R. Sedition, BH Media Group holding the evil in the amount of $830.34 for advertising evil purchasing a purchase order that's not obtained in exchange.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number eleven, is Payman R. Sedition, BH Media Group holding the evil in the amount of $830.34 for advertising evil purchasing a purchase order that's not obtained in exchange.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twelve, Payman R. Sedition, to Tails Construction in the amount of $13,600 for demolition of two structures using FY 2017 funds.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number thirteen, is Payman R. Sedition, to Airmark Uniform Services in the amount of $40.90 rental uniform expenses for fleet services invoiced would receive after the fiscal year end.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number fourteen, is Payment Authorization, CME Testing and Engineering in the amount of $10,339.24 for general testing services for various canoes invoiced would receive in blackened purchase order in place of these services. Move for approval. Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number fifteen, is Payment Authorization, traffic power in amount of $340.80 for parts for generated facility services purchased was closed prior to receiving the (inaudible). Second. Motion made second, discussion.
(inaudible).
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number sixteen, is Payment Authorization, to R&amp;R outfitters in the amount of $1,220 to pay on the sheriff's office purchase order that's not obtained in exchange.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number seventeen, is Request Approval Transfer, 2002 Ford E350 non-tenant unit, June 5455 Facility Services to build a FY 18 CIP request for fleet services alone in Human Services Department, 2009 Dodge Charger non-tenant, J on 176, build a voyage of a new vehicle race.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number eighteen, is Request for Outstate Travel, Human Services Counselor Latonya Hidrich in the amount of, to attend the annuals research and treatment conference in Kansas City, Missouri, Dayton Traveler, October 25 through 28, 2017.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number nineteen, is Request for Job Description, Class Code 2666, Engineering Tech 10, 900 hours for road bridge support. Move for approval. Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty, is Internet Service Agreement between Brazos Transit District and Brazos County.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty-one, is Request for Texas Associate Counties Tag Health Employee Benefit Pool, ATV, E, Doc.
(inaudible). Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty-two, is Amended Funding Agreement with Scotty's House Child Advocacy Center, FY 28.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty-three, is Request from the Information Technology Department to approve the Registration Services Agreement between Brazos County and the American Registry for Internet, Net Numbers, LTD, ARIN.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. I think, Eric, that's just, we'll own our own.
Yes, sir. This agreement is really just to acquire administrative and technical resources to manage that pool of IP addresses that we're not purchasing. Actually, you'll remember back office, we already went through the work in trying to acquire 200 big CIP services today with IP addresses and administrative providers, kind of a bottleneck if we can't go out and shop around and go prepare the services significantly that we could if we own IP addresses. Not only in our own, also it's very difficult to bring in for them internet service providers and for our customers, so this is part of our, of our (inaudible).
Okay. Thank you. The motion is second, I believe.
Yes.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty-four, is Local Agreement between City of College Station, Brazos County, areas of rubbish construction projects.
(inaudible). Second.
Motion made second. I had a, we may have all received an email from Marie Wilf. She had new comments and made questions.
One thing she mentioned was that it was three lane and it moved down to two lane. That was at her request way back when.
No question during the NGO, those discussions all went on, and they wanted it a lesser road than what it proposed is. That's how it got, that's how it got down to two lanes. No question. So she had comments on 24, 26, and 27. We're going to attach her email to the minutes. I'm not going to go into the discussions and think she has questions, but we'll attach those to the minutes so that they're there if somebody wants to look at.
(inaudible).
So 24, we've got motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 25, is Request for Attachment Proposal for Design and Oversight Services related to design, build, rehabilitation of the Gallister Lane in the amount of $41,290 to (inaudible).
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 26, is Change Order to Purchase Order Numbers 17003659 to Michelin Martini in the amount of $9,250 for plating services for Project 17X304.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 27, is Ward Fit Number 17X301, Expansion of Mesa Veridian, and the approval of unit price contract in the amount of $1,106,445.20, and I think that will work with to Knifre River. Is that correct?
Correct.
Motion made second to approve the contract to Knifre. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 28, is Consider and Take Action on Well Respected Utility Different Cost Estimates of $4,550 for the relocation of two inch water line and two meters to accommodate the expansion and improvement of Cherokee Drive, site located in (inaudible).
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 29, is Request Permission to Enterprise Property owned by Andrew Go, Merkel Road, 146 miles southeast of Golden Line Road, County will cut down and burn a new right-of-way going into private property from northern Anfield, ditch, back slope. Work is being done, future improvements in Merkel Road, site located in (inaudible). Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 30, is Admitted Journal Entries, Expedited Journal Entries, FY 16/17, 130096 through 130100, B Expedited Journal Entries, FY 17/18, 100035 through 100041.
A and B?
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 31, is Budget Names. But A is Budget Names FY 16/17, 55.1, and B is Budget Names FY 17/18, 3.1 through 3.16, but we need to remove 3.14. So with the exception of 3.14, those in (inaudible).
(inaudible) A and B with the exception, bringing out 3.14.
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 33, Personnel Change Status. Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number 33, is Payment Claim. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 7160322 through Claim Number 7160552. Move for approval.
(inaudible).
Motion made second, discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We will skip down to number 36, acknowledgment of road and bridge maintenance expansion reports FY 17 through July through September of 2017. I think that's just an acknowledgement.
(inaudible).
And then number 37, acknowledgment of Brazos County Central President, Independent Author Report, Financial Statement for the Year End in December 31, 2016. That's an acknowledgement. 38 is acknowledgment of monthly reports submitted in September of 2017. 39, Sheriff's Department, (inaudible).
That's right. Morning, Judge Commissioners. Our peak in the last 24 hours was 656. 557 were male and 99 were female. We have 46 with home confinement of electronic monitors and seven (inaudible).
Good. Thank you, sir. Number 40 is Announcement of Interest Upset Hospital Features, Inter Toppers. Number 41, is Car Systems Input and our Concerns. Here, and we'll go back up to number 34, fee in executive session percentage, Texas government co-section, 551.07, for discussing appointment and form evaluation reassignment duties, discipline, and our disposal of position of county engineer. And we need, of course, can't, of course, attorney Jennifer (inaudible). I bet she's, I believe, that's all we need in the executive session. Time is 10:28, and we've got a, 10:30, we've got a workshop for wellness (inaudible) in 30, or whenever we get out of executive session. uh, in 30, or whenever we get out of the executive session.